There is. Ordered onto this computer. Prepare you?
Yes, that's the thing, that's why I said.
And then just if you want to go down here.
Well.
You know.
Just stop it and don't ever start it?
That's right.
Yep.
Oh, they made a coconut.
Sitting on the floor.
Okay. Nine o'clock.
I know. And then we could say Chris, that was a whole lot of part of it. Actually, I'm like, well, this book is a great. Yeah, you're nine o'clock, so you're ready to go.
Nope. You, you too. Sorry.
Well, maybe don't at nine o'clock. Um, like, thank everybody for coming out this morning. And, uh, we'll get through this together. So, the first item on the agenda from me is to both the roles and the students. There will be an explanation of the public hearing given by the administration later on. The town of Hannah, as the applicant for the land use bylaw, will be given the first opportunity to play their reason for having made the proposal before the hearing completes, the applicant will be given the opportunity to make some remarks. Any person present wishing to address the public hearing, either in opposition or support, may use them. We will ask that all those present wish to make a presentation. Give us your name, who you represent, and whether or not you support or oppose the proposed ID bylaw. A list will be presented, may be found part of the list. A presentation considered will be made to council and will be restricted to five minutes. We are going to enforce five minutes, so please try to keep your presentation to five minutes. Your cooperation and board everyone's opportunity to make your be known and break your relationship. No discussion will be permitted during those between those making presentations, only to the council be permitted and asked questions. And presented to the points of clarification, so if something were not clear what you're asking, you may ask your question now. This is not an interview. So, uh, next on the agenda is Mr. Nill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the purpose of the public hearing is for council of town Hannah to gather information with regards to the proposed ID bylaw. And to be able to give consideration to all opinions when making a decision as to whether or not the proposed ID bylaw ten thirty-two twenty twenty-three should be approved, amended, or denied. The public hearing advertising is needed to use simple government act regulations with the use of many different advertising methods, including ads in the Hannah Sentinel newspaper, the DCA, the county newspaper, through the town of Hannah news, town of Hannah website, and through the town of Hannah social media. Again, yeah, so on behalf of the applicant, uh, um, just gonna go through a few things here and and, uh, Palisade will have some comments as well, potentially. So, the town of Hannah and Palisade Regional News Service began the process of reviewing the town's current ID bylaw nineteen seventy-two thousand two hundred and twenty-two. It is common for ID bylaw to be comprehensively reviewed and updated every five or ten years. And this has been the practice for the town of Hannah in the past, ensuring that ID bylaw remains current and in tune with the changes to the use of government acts. An open house was formally advertised in help of the authority twenty twenty-three opportunity for the public to discuss the draft ID bylaw with Palisade and town representatives. Also is an opportunity to provide feedback on the draft. Letters were mailed, uh, at the end of January twenty twenty-three to approximately one hundred fifteen landowners to notify them of a proposed something changed to their property. The landowners were provided an invitation to attend the February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three open house or to directly contact Palisade staff by phone or email. Palisade received numerous calls and emails, as well as a few visitors to the office to set the proposed zoning of the properties and the draft ID bylaw. Palisade and town staff discussed all landowners' concerns prior to the open house with those who reached out to Palisade. All comments received through the open house and through the other methods of, uh, opportunity to communicate and provide concerns were compiled into a what we heard report, which was presented to council for information on April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Council thereafter directed administration to prepare a report to respond to the residents' concerns and questions and to prepare revised ID bylaw for the formal council approval process. The response is to the what we heard report, providing detailed responses to every comment and question received. The report also provides a recommendation for if and how each concern is considered and revised ID bylaw are in to. A redlined version of revised ID bylaw ten thirty-two twenty twenty-three was also developed and shows the changes that are proposed to the new ID bylaw in accordance with the responses to what we heard report. Revised ID bylaw received first reading at the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. It would determine that the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three council meeting had provided ample time for the public review the proposed bylaw and to not conflict the summer vacation plans that the proposed ID bylaw ten thirty-two twenty-three was made available to the public for review throughout the entire summer. This provided the public ample time to prepare the public hearing, uh, was scheduled for September thirteenth at the August eighth, two thousand and twenty-three council. Following the public hearing, today's public hearing, um, it is anticipated that the ID bylaw will be presented to council for second reading, you know, October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. That's fine, right, Ken? So, um, sorry, following public hearing, it was anticipated that the ID bylaw will be presented to council for second reading at the October tenth, two thousand and twenty-three council. Council has the opportunity to amend any portion of the ID bylaw prior to giving the bylaw a second reading and or third. It's anticipated that the ID bylaw will be brought to council for third reading by law reading November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three council meeting, with the bylaw anticipated to come into effect January one, two thousand and twenty-four. At the same time, we've also prepared a revised, uh, revised version of the proposed telecommunication structure policy. This policy is planned to be adopted by council through reading of the new ID bylaw ten thirty-two twenty twenty-three to also come into effect January one, two thousand and twenty-four. This will ensure there's no conflicting regulations in ID bylaw with regards to telecommunications structures.
Thank you, Palisade.
Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Mary Anne. I just want to thank, um, the ones who voted for Hannah for the project, um, trying to make the best for the town of Hannah. Uh, and I think we're gonna get in there. Um, we helped prepare this document, this document today, and, um, is now in the hands of council to determine the proposed bylaw. It's something that I'm about to do, but I'm excited to be in the public office.
December. Uh, I'll call you my names.
Sure.
Yeah, just. I was wondering. Okay, on the, okay, on the phone stuff, um, everybody got panicked when Kim's phone rang, so I was very cute. So, make sure your phones are either off or unused at least. If you have to take a call, please, uh, step out of the group and, uh, move on with the meeting. Uh, we'll start with those opposed. If I might go full politician. Not very good, maybe I hold.
Okay, hold, sorry. Opposed, Mr. East, basically means, uh, if you've got any, um, concerns with the bylaws and citizens would like council to look at and then you, um, to, uh, in, into a different format or a different, um, use or et cetera.
And though we have yours written to write as well, if you have anything to add or someone submitted.
Yeah, I would like to.
Step up on the mic, please.
I would like to follow the guy in the latter row with that. Please, thank you. You all, first of all, over all the time, teaching everyone, and, and considerable of not free. Uh. Respectively, firstly, what I, uh, ended up, I think, is C two. Um, I know about where I want to be or what I want. And pretty much, I, I didn't really understand, but, but it ended up is if you're looking at everything, the horrible situation, are you just talking bad and talking bad or doing good, you're supposed to try and make sense? So I'm hoping, I'm gonna go through this somewhat, I think you all read my letter. You can just about everything you can sign on. It's starting to break. So with that, the flexibility is, which is good. The other thing we found is because they're so large, uh, what we were moving, how was that a key mistake? Now, the, the C two general history allows for, uh, anything I went through, the only thing I thought where I might have qualified is building supply centers. And, uh, what was it? So, I'm trying to, uh, I'm trying to go figure out what building supply center is. And, uh, I don't know. Supply center, the, it means that used for building materials, household batteries, and other things. Offered to a desperate sale, mainly blue outdoor storage. Well, that's, that's what I believe. Means the use for building materials, household batteries, and other related goods are stored, offered desperate sale, and mainly blue outdoor storage. Well, I don't think that's us at all. So. We need to go to the stretch. Which the judge in there, I'm very much against, because then you got all this bureaucracy to go through. And basically businesses that are out there to make money, not spend all their time going through a bunch of bureaucracy. That may take months or not. What may, uh, fit as a description there, if everybody's speaking their kind of their heart, uh, let us do it. Contract is good. So, we go to contract. They mean the use for the provision of contract services within building trades and, uh, well, means that use for the provision of contract services in building trades and, uh, so, I guess the building's intended to use it for them. And it's got any, so if we say it was good normally, so it is a set contract. So we can sell the art thing. I'm not exactly sure what, but something associated, whatever something that's been associated with contract services. But if I felt wrong saying it down there, last thing is, yes, I mean.
Still, we can step back up.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Well, I was like, oh, it's you weren't.
Yeah. So, then I thought, well, maybe industrial is better. So. I feel like down with the side yard, the front yard, the back yard. I don't understand men's bylaws, I. Front yard is twenty feet. Side yard is, am I on the right one? Side yard is, uh, sixteen going forward, unless you got a fire. The minimum rear, rear yard is, I'm gonna say twenty, nineteen twenty-seven. Building height and the minimum budget, I don't think I'm a musician. I don't know.
It don't work five minutes, it doesn't double it.
Whatever, I mean, there's a point I'm trying to get across, gentlemen. Pretty much, C two is nobody, industrial is nobody, it's just a joke. And by the joke, I mean the side, I don't know why I think side, for example, the whole, uh, the dig in the side yard, the building don't say it's gonna help do well to the environment. So I don't know how many times we have to jump to do it in order to your building. I also feel that there's no one knows how to run an operation, how to properly use your property anyway. Then the person that owns it. And the part of it really starting to hurt, we're smart enough to pay the taxes on, first of all, buy the property, pay the interest and pay the, uh, or the law. But we aren't smart enough to figure out how to use it. And then every time, like, if anyone might have read that letter to my partner. Because I was writing down, uh, one time you had five houses outside on the property, because the way you're reading right now, I think about ninety-nine point five percent of the business in Hannah are non-compliant because they're doing something outside. Well, why would you buy a lot that's bigger than thirty-five six? And you can't store anything outside without asking someone and then going to a committee meeting and then sitting on a trial or whatever. And people can't afford it? Why don't we sympathize these laws? And get them to where most people are complying, then it would be easy for the Palisade to follow through with this and it would be easy for them to all to say, yeah, I think you're compliant. And writing them up, uh, building. Then the other thing is, if we're, if we're not trying to follow through with some common things, but I would still like more time to find out. So many things, but it's like, I don't know. But if we're not gonna do this, are we planning on enforcing these bylaws? Because if we aren't, why are we gonna? And I think Dave would be the busiest guy in Canada. If we started enforcing these bylaws, if he makes a trip it all. He'll probably win, and so is I. I think I, I, Hannah's a great place, don't they, you know? But let's, let's make Hannah work the drive. Let's get people in here, let's find a buyer of business, start a business, and follow through with this business, and then set home. Like, I finally found out that for, I think, about fifty years, our business was non-compliant. Obsession, I think, but that doesn't, like, I couldn't imagine that I had five houses started and somebody can tell me to trust me. I, I was just shattered at the thought of. Anyway, I, I think that's the point. I was very much like to go over to more of a council and, or Palisade, but it's down, but they can't see anyone. First reading means that they're done their thing. This, I think, is totally wrong. Fifty months driving through, and I still don't get that in town. I think you have your first person that doesn't have time. Like, I know it was taken away. And our building was, we were ordered to be moved in by John totally dense beside her and whatever. Then I was told once it would be used as a provider of, then. Going down the main, wanting to drive around town with some of the town folk. Most of those places are full of junk. The fire truck didn't get in there anymore. What's? He said. But people in the hand. Yeah, I think, there was like, seriously, that's what changed all of that. Through trying to talk to the every little lot in Hannah that somebody comes up with wild ideas. And so, we change and, you know, because he needs the industrial, so he'll make this lot over here, stop, one law, and then they don't. No, he goes and buys somewhere where it's stuck. Then he does whatever, like, just about the rest of it's done. And we got comments, it started off, and because someone else over here where they shouldn't be speaking about, they were commercial or residential or whatever. Trying to do something they shouldn't be doing? That's good. Thank you all, appreciate your time.
How's it out there? My name is Clint Hutton, and so, uh, qualified for the. Alright. Uh, I've been here about forty years ago, on the eve of his death. Uh, yeah, I don't want to see David do anything, uh, do anything, jump off a bridge or anything. But, uh, I, uh, have a little guilt about that. This guy's coming home from a meeting and, uh, comes this guy that's already jumped off a bridge and he's like, and he's, oh, oh, what, what are you doing? Uh, we gotta talk, I'm gonna talk to him, tell him why you're under this illusion to jump off this bridge. And the guy says, well, I just, we have ID bylaw meeting and I just, I just can't figure it all out. And my life. What I decided, the guy says, well, I just came from the same meeting. And I think I can explain it to you. So, we, next half an hour or so, he's explaining, and it's explaining this guy how the ID bylaw works and finally after about half an hour, he jumps off the bridge. Anyway. Uh, I've been here, like I said, forty years. I, I realize we need a lot of important, um, to be, I think, I was hoping to be able to to deal with these things. Most of these things are to do with, here, as I can figure out, neighbors not necessarily getting on to stuff and trying to keep the town thriving and orderly. Uh, a little bit of overalls, what I mean, of course. I'm not brought in the steering. Yeah, I'm on that. Uh, anyway, it had a lot to do with Alberta becoming more and more, uh, humid for all of the city. The climate conditions currently being necessary. Uh, I guess what some of my concerns are, uh, I think they're all boiled down to getting along with your neighbors. Uh, that's the most important thing. And I've been here forty years. I don't know that everybody loves me, but I try to get along with neighbors. And if they have another way, I hope they'll come to me and, and tell me first what their issues are. But, uh, I guess my biggest concern is the erosion of, of individuality as a town, as a province, as a country. Uh, I think we're getting undermined by outside influences. Uh, at one time, Hannah would have dealt with all these bylaws. When there's people coming to town council and, uh, personally, to town council what their concerns were. And then council, they would either initiate a bylaw right there then and voted on and their new bylaw created. It was all kept pretty vocal. And same thing on a provincial level now with, uh, Daniel Smith dealing with, uh, net zero and, uh, suppose climate change, seems there's a, part of the, the threat of some pandemic, whether it's real or the pandemic. We have all these outside influences coming in and, uh, telling us what to do. And even mid, or I don't know, mid, or we had a discussion at one of the very first meetings here. And he said that in the event of an emergency, I'm wrong here, that really we have to answer the authorities above us, the ones really we have to act sort of through authorities above us, the ones like your EHS or, or, uh, whoever, uh, is above us in the government. And to me, Hannah would be more on the map if we could take a stand.
Rob, okay.
If we would take a stand as a little town, it'd be more on the map. Like, the sign if you would, the old signs, the new highway sign, uh, the old sign was probably made by some local, uh, made two signs, uh, but all I'm saying is more we can keep things here and take a stand when outside influences. Like, take a stand, farming and ranching and oil and gas are a heartbeat of our town. And I think that there may be other industries, well, power plant and things like that, but if we can stay local, hot, that, localist, like, well, like, the people that are trying to grow every, every level of government, we can take a stand, keep those things out of our town. I'm like, Dory, I'll get up there, sponsor of all the issues, but they can see where these things were were being influenced from way far away from our town. I think you'd be way further than that. And I'm for individual rights. I'm for crazy people moving to Hannah and coming up with some crazy idea that they can adopt. And that makes our town unique. That makes our town, uh, interesting for people to visit. So that's all I've got to say, I guess. Thank you.
Thanks, Clint. Uh, next, please.
Good morning. My name is Martha. I never been in the industrial rush. When we bought the property, they weren't part of the town. As words have worn, it wasn't a creation of bylaws, not. The province, especially the AUC, is the district area authority of solar power plant. In accordance with section ninety-one, one of the Act, where the AUC do grant the approval, it prevails over any state for the plan, thus decisions by a development authority. Furthermore, per chapter six one nine two of the MDA, when the development application is municipal, municipality must approve the application to the extent of the application consent, where the AUC accruals. The AUC would consider comments from a municipality in a supplemental process of a solar power plant. However, if the AUC does not consider factors, units, decisions that are important to the town regularly, namely, gold use and construction, and any events, the development process can address concerns. It is very complicated that this section, the union of us, if this AUC does approve the application. The development authority would then address pressing in the law, but to any conditions of approval that it means necessary, don't tend to agree. Currently, ten fifteen says the following. Prior to making the application for a development permit for a solar power plant, an application still has been all necessary approval from the AUC. In addition to the requirements in section five one, development permit application, an application for a solar power plant going through a copy of all project-related application materials and approval from the AUC. My recommendation is that this section, ten fifteen, is to do on the following tab, two thousand five one five. Every proposed development requires AUC approval. This approval must be received prior to plan or development plan. A copy of all project-related application materials and approval from AUC must be submitted with the application for a development permit. And also five one says the committee can ask for other information they want from the applicant. Also removes the solar power plant from the district energy for the urban reserved land. If a solar project wants to come to town, urban reserved land is not large enough for a bylaw project. Therefore, a change to the land use bylaw would be required anyways. Therefore, remove it from the urban reserve district energy and deal with all the land use bylaws at the time of the solar power plant application. AUC has the authority to approve the solar power plant, even if it does not show thousands of personnel use. It is not mandatory to be living anywhere. It gives the wrong impression, the government, that the town is the authority of the solar plant down minutes. There's a very, very truth that is open up against those crazy developments in town minutes. And as they said in one of their recent meetings, they did a plan on things of level, the land level surface. That means the land moves like this. I look up the winter every morning to look at it. And so the panels are going to look like that. And now they're changing light in the north. Up and down now, so it's looking. Anyways, that's not a place in sight for people driving to town on the east approach. As the bylaws are many complex parts with, I'm assuming you, councillor members, that a lot of extra time going through, but I'm not, which I think. I'm having trouble finding a reason why all the changes is permitted and used in district energy. There are citizens that would like things explained better so no one has to look forever and try and get it. I prefer myself, I won't see a problem with the might asking people one at a time only. Like, if they have election time, maybe they'll do it, they won't ever be able to see out much in the last so many years, if you don't. Thank you for your time. And I had to wear this top because it matches your son.
Martha, could you leave us a copy of that? Wouldn't that be okay? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Martha. And, uh, yeah, it comes back to side quite well. So that's one of the little hiccup you've got on the way as far as cheating aside. So, uh, next to both. Carol. Uh, no, we will not read them. We will acknowledge them as having received them. All the council have a copy of them as well. So there's five who did, first didn't send him. Uh, Bill Reese, George Williams, Mayor Crosser, Carol, and Steve Mike. Okay. They're the exact same, but you know. Okay, we'll, we'll, we'll call the same, we'll start with five, we'll call it five, and then let them know. Okay, give you.
My name is Carol Linness. And I'm meeting, um, those from like, when you and myself. The following are my observations, questions, comments, or any comments you find in the file I've entered into the conference. I wish this to be submitted and presented to council for the not due attention of others. I'm an opposition to the passing of the bylaw for driving using and farmer outline number law. A group of about forty-five citizens presented an informal petition requesting further time to be educated regarding the law and its changes. This would prevent informal to apply the county if the argument to respond to this request by citizen before a formal thinking would be completed. The what we heard document states actually time was allocated for gathering work and input and none was received. The proposed document was quite an overhaul to the twenty-twelve document in this one. There are many changes to go over and many people are not familiar with the laws that we've introduced. It would make much more education for the public to conform regarding the proposed changes. We have had a couple of meetings and people have conversed, but question meaning. A town hall meeting where the ones have gone over for all to hear and understand at once would be more beneficial in each one of our past listening questions. Again, this was over the summer month and we, we, we apologize for what happens when you start. We were also informed that our last response was before the what we heard document was prepared. As for myself, that, that we wouldn't understand, that we could not add further questions as it appeared that version two, the final version, was first reading and the product. In the what we heard materials stated a few times that small winged energy systems have been completely removed from the law. However, the debate regarding global energies in state are viewed as whereby a system that produces electrical power or heat to be used for on-site consumption or heating requirements mean or by means such as but not limited to actively passive solar collectors attached to a building deal for more energy port exchange. It appears to include small winged energy systems via scrutiny of it not being listed but possibly referenced in the but not limited to, limited to section. Which has been considered to be found. Um, C2 not covered, but amended back to eighty percent. The inability to locate the reference of when or why the mask law coverage was being confirmed. The reasons for changing the law, that was really recorded prior to the passing of the law. The people in the future can understand when you can put a decision as, um, the comment and the what we heard. There were the very purity question where rules, um, made where rules are created for each different C2 area instead of applying the same rules where each C2 area is different. Maybe it is time for a completely different perspective to allow for more flexibility and greater commitment input. Maybe separate bylaws for each section at times. You don't have to follow through with so much documentation to understand one section at a time. Or we are asked to pass such a large document in one reading. Many definitions of the changes that we proposed of, it takes time to cross reference and pick out which change and what they meant to say now. I also have my own time to think. Many of the following concerns remain. I have a list that I copy from the one we had proved. And the response would appear to indicate some people are not satisfied. I would not know what other concerns have been added to the S3 version one or the version two because the changes have not been installed in an infinite format, which appears to be the preferred format among residents. The recommendations are compelling in the what we heard document. And it appears, um, and part of them was to help educate the people in town Hannah. It appears that there has been no attempt to hold information set and throw work up to provide people in council with the opportunity for them to understand the law. As in the example below, certain type of development is not included in the list. An applicant puts in that an application to amend the law to add a new, um, to let it go on and go on. This would mean the public has a chance to say yes, you know, with the outcome. It may be the case that most people don't know this existed in the industrial section under district energy. And this was at all anything in this. If they are looking for the rule regarding their home, it is important that the people understand of this and how we get makeup of the town. This would also mean that passing this law at this time is not a priority as people are allowed to amend the law as is needed to assist in their endeavors in town. The following changes have been made in response to concerns and no requests from people in the community. No permits required for fences unless they are not compliant. Units for farm animals were removed from residential farm acreage. Rode for derriled vehicle spectrum more than forty days were removed. Better parking for larger semis was introduced in certain. However, this building exceeded people parking by twenty-four minutes. Um, allowed for wheelchair ramps to be focused in guard set back to its curriculum. Um, amended C2 eighty percent. And a few other concern devices were amended as requested by at least one person. Would have been, thank, thank you very much for that. However, it appears that the following changes now all were made without explanation or desire from any residents according to what we heard report. These are concerning as it provides for the normal pace of work on and for the increased immigration and homeless people that are coming into Hannah would both appear to be an issue for some residents. Solar power plant was added to the earlier. It wasn't indicated in the red line version. And it is not listed in the current draft. It appears the municipality is unable to override a decision by AUC. So the law continues to continue with the charter. So it appears that it is not necessary to include solar power plant as spread during the year. Including this in the law would indicate a threat to some people. Solar power plants in the area. There has been an increase in number of that we've learned about of solar power plants in the town. Is to be resolved prior to amending the law, other than what has requested by the community.
Carol, we're in five. So we'll wrap up. Take three then four.
It has also been confusing as it's indicated in their first presentation that the charter would cover, I mean, those three thousand and solar wind projects and was fitting to the which is in the town residence. Whether it's a quarter of the law. However, it's not even current law that was being mentioned. As our premier Daniel Smith has demonstrated, he has set the rule as a system who have been indicating that the solar plants have been implemented for the voice of people by slowing down the approval process, at least until appropriate measures are implemented, we would ask the same on time. It appears that in adding this to the law, council is supporting the proposal from the AUC. However, the community is being told that the council has not expressed support or rejection. Separate telecommunications policies have been created with the understanding that the town of Hannah is not the approving authority for these structures. Therefore, why are telecommunications and solar power plants being handled differently? Apartments and attached housing was obtained from district energy permitted use in a multiple address entity. The apartment was in a brown color, however, the attached housing is in blue red. It appears that Palace from town in two thousand and two decided that it was important to allow for the unoccupied building of apartments and large and multi-million grounds in the city. As it appears, a request for it being not included in the what we heard for I've left to assume that Palace during town meeting's taking, have decided to include a separate apartment after the first person of the law was told. It would be concerning if the public and your council is not aware of this question or if the public is even in a meeting. In conclusion, I would not want this passed as I have not had the opportunity and time to clarify what we would have hoped for, and would to learn more, the lens of other community members. I would require the opportunity to communicate and work out and meet with the council, the community with the clarity for each thing and the reasons behind each thing. The first reading was passed following the CEO, KDO's recommendation, but the council members were thinking and asking questions for another time. I remain uncertain that council has passed a district agreement understanding or using the opportunities afforded to ask questions before that. It would be inappropriate for citizens or councils. The document of the law that one does not really understand or view as a small part of it. I don't know. The rules for the man is by law, I don't know if they started, you know, after nineteen thirty. But that's quite a heavy, because people live, what, non-compliance is also an issue because the house burns down. You can't go back to the way of the wise and some people can't afford anything different than that. Um, the bylaws have a many force, but it has different animal units. So it seems there may be too many bylaws. Um, bylaws could be amended, so I don't know if five or ten years have been important or not in that either. And I think that's everything. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carol. Any others opposed? Seeing none, any in support? Seeing none, um, moving on to Mr. Hill, we're closing with marks.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. Just want to, uh, reiterate, uh,
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to reiterate the fact that we did receive five written comments, uh, letters. So they have all been, uh, Mrs. Lindeski went through two of the, two of the five. Mr. Reese has provided one and talked to it. Um, there was a couple of other letters that were included. We're not going to read the letters, but I just want to reassure everyone in council has copies. Undertake, uh, the OWLS comments prior to making decisions on, on the bylaw. As I said earlier, uh, we, Mayor said, we thank you for your participation. We thank you for your input. Um, the ball that they stayed in council's court, um, at this point in time, administratively, we will take direction from council on any amendments or changes that they would like to make to the land use bylaw. Um, and if there are, are some, we just need to look at incorporating them prior to, uh, second reading or at second reading. And we are anticipating that at our October tenth council meeting. Um, we'd like to, uh, move forward with this, but if there are certainly a num, a large number of amendments, council will take it, we delay the process slightly, but it was added that now we are anticipating October tenth uh, council meeting that second reading would be provided to council. And they would be subject to, uh, amendments that they would want to bring forward and pass at that time to the land use bylaw. I do want to, um, make sure before we do conclude the public hearing, if there are any questions that council has of administration of some of the comments that were made in the public. If they do have any, please, uh, please bring them forward now, uh, we will attempt to answer the questions and clarification.
As several of you indicated, uh, there are changes, the changes going to come and on, 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 on. Um, this is a live document, a living document, so, uh, what we passed today, or what we passed at our third reading, it's not to say that we won't be changing that three, four, five, six months down the road, so, uh, I'm just asking about this, it's fact.
Mr. Mayor, there's, uh, the land use bylaw is a living document. And it can be amended at any time. There is a process to do that, and any, any amendment to the land use bylaw requires um, similar format as we've gone through with this. This has been a, certainly an extended format. But any, any amendment that would be brought forward to the land use bylaw, um, we go through a process similar to this in terms of the amendment to the bylaw would have that first reading. Uh, there would have to be advertising and public hearing held, uh, similar to this to have feedback from residents on the proposed amendment prior to going to council for second, third reading. Generally, in the last ten years that I have been here, there have been several amendments to the land use bylaw. Majority of those amendments that have occurred have occurred as a result of a rezoning of property. Uh, so if you're going to rezone a property from R one to C two or whatever, um, certainly as a, as the property owner, you have the request to, or the opportunity to, uh, request that change, and there is a process. That's generally where most of our amendments have come through. I know we've made some housekeeping amendments along the line. We've made some amendments when cannabis became legislated that had to be made into the land use bylaw. So it's certainly in the document that, uh, um, administratively and then from council's perspective and useful planning commission's perspective is used, uh, to move forward on making decisions, but it can be, as I said, it can be a moving. There is a process, but there is, it can be a moving. Any other clarification? So go ahead, Tracy.
Thank you. There's just a few comments and questions throughout the public hearing, and I heard that, um, I felt I could try to provide representation for the council. Um, some of them are quite clear. Um, by them in the public. Uh, and the first one was regards to the solar power plant. Um, appearing in the version, uh, first reading and what was in the first reading. And I do have to apologize, that was a sweet air. People probably feel like that the bad ones make a tear on it. And I, um, in the first document, when I wrote the explanation of all the changes, I said, solar power, you put it in, you are forgotten. You couldn't think better. So that was an error on, on my part, and I understand that that's not a great error, uh, error to make. Um, so when it appeared in version two, the red line version, it didn't appear as a change. Um, and it was already in the, so my apologies. Uh, the second clarification, there's a question of why solar. Uh, this is a result of a municipal government act. Next, due to section six nineteen. So six nineteen of the act exempts development of municipalities cannot get any new approvals. Um, or change the approval or issue decision that's different than a certain approval. So this um, decision of the AUC, the A E M R B, the N R C B. Anyways, there's a big list at the front of the M G A, which is six nineteen. And so six nineteen said if a provincial department makes a decision, a municipality can't make a decision that's different than that. So there's certain things that municipalities typically don't ask for permits because they're issued by a provincial government or the YAS, um, R, for example. Um, telecommunications are approved immediately. They are not in the under section. So they are not exempted. However, they're approved by the federal government. And so if something is approved by the federal government, we also can ask those can deal with the approval. The federal government differently though in this. In their approvals, you can look at this, there's a, I forget, I don't have the name of it right now, but there is a telecommunications document from federal government that when they're approving, um, some powers, you have to go through this process with the municipal. And the federal government encourages every municipal government to adopt a policy like this to guide that process. And the federal government also recommends asking a council for a letter of concurrence or non-concurrence in that matter between those. So it is different because the federal government and the provincial government have something on that. Um, and there is also one, uh, question of why there are the differences in the tax change version between the word apartment and the tax closing, and that's a evil of track changes when you're looking at MS Word. So if you delete something, it just red, red that is red there. You add something, it reds it and underlines it. If you move something from one location to the other, it shows it in green. So notice apartment being deleted in one section and moved to another section, and so it just appears different in fact. And that's something that I can't change with MS Word. I tried to call. Okay, the key to keep on calm. Um, and that's all the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Again, council, if you need questions for clarification that they'd like to ask or respond to. Looks like we have one over there.
I guess just in support of, uh, I probably, I want to make sure that, um, the questions and statements we heard today align to support the business industry we have here today and what we have in Hannah. So again, for me, I'll be looking strongly at some of the things that were brought forward once again today in the letter to somehow make sure that there's some alignment that supports, so we're not, um, eliminating our decision business offered in the community of Hannah. So I guess this is supportive of some of those questions. I thank you, the public for coming out and, and all that time, because I do agree, um, it has taken hours and I have a lot more to unpack with that. But, um, I just want to make sure that, um, you know, that from my perspective of you looked at the things that we presented to make sure that there's alignment. I don't want to lose what we have, um, here in Hannah already, because we do kind of live by the model of, I did likely have that.
Any further questions, clarifications, comments? Seeing, seeing none. Um, I do want to give, uh, a special thank you to Mr. Chris Warwick. Um, he helped us with the sound. We weren't sure when we started this process, um, whether we have ten people here or hundred fifty people here, um, and wanted to make sure sometimes when you have a large crowd in the facility, that it's not, uh, easy to hear. And so I do thank, uh, Chris for, for doing what he did, so we have the mic set up, everyone here clear. Um, also for your reference, um, the meeting, the hearing today is, is what's being livestreamed. Um, just the audio portion, not, not any video, so the audio portion. So it will be on YouTube, uh, if you want to go back and, and listen to, um, the discussion that was held here today. So, um, with that, I don't have anything else. Um, and I will pass it over to Mayor.
Um, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody coming out. It's a very high and tense of a project, how much we put our work into that, but it's like, it's while I'm buying up my track, which we've pulled out numerous times. There's, uh, lots of interesting things. Um, again, I do have it memorized. If someone comes in and asks about particular item, I do review it, and I will call again for it if I don't have the answer for it. Uh, so we have a few people who just came to see what the process was, which I appreciate, and the presenters, thank you. Uh, we will definitely listen to what we said to people to make a better process. That being said, thank you, Mr. Warwick. Uh, I thought my voice was loud enough, but apparently not. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at nine fifty-eight.